Hello, my friends, I'm Jay Wolf, and it's a delight to share this study on Psalms. We will be focused on Psalm 22, 23, and 24, the heart of the Psalms. So why don't you get your Bible? Open it up, because this is a Bible study. And let's do something mighty important that has eternal value. Let's look and see the character of God in the book of Psalms. Years ago, Billy Graham inspired me to be a reader of the Psalms. When I was a teenager, I got some material from the Billy Graham Association, and they encouraged me to be a student of the Bible. So I started reading the Bible every day, and I learned that Billy Graham would read from the Psalms and the Proverbs every day. He said that he would read the Psalms for worship and the Proverbs for wisdom. So for decades, I've read the book of Psalms every day for worship. I've read the Proverbs for wisdom. And to know the will and the work of God, I've read the Old Testament, and certainly the Gospels and the New Testament letters. And I would urge you to do the same. Feast on God's living truth that transforms you into the image of Christ. Here's the real goal. As we look at Psalm 22, 23, and 24, I want us to see not only the character of God, but I want us to see a crystal clear picture of Jesus. So let's begin the study by opening our eyes, asking God to open our eyes. Let me tell you a fun story. I heard about this snake who was having a vision problem. So he went to the eye doctor, and he got fitted with a new pair of glasses. The next day, he returned. He slithered back into the doctor's office, and he said, "Doctor, you have changed my life. Now, I can see clearly. For instance, just last night, I discovered that my girlfriend was a garden hose." Well, let me state the obvious. Sometimes, we can miss what is right in front of us. That's why we need to pray that God would open our eyes. It says in Ephesians 1:18, "I pray the eyes of your heart may be enlightened, so you will know the hope of God's calling." Here's what I want you to do for the next few minutes. As you look at Psalm 22, 23, and 24, let's put on our Jesus lenses. Oh, I love Jesus lenses. And they remind me that I want to see Jesus everywhere. I want to see Jesus in the circumstances of life, in the people I encounter, and particularly in the Word of God. Here's the goal. We're going to see Jesus in Psalm 22 as Savior, in Psalm 23 as shepherd, in Psalm 24 as the sovereign King of my everything. Let's ask God to help us. Dear Father, we come before you, and we are humbled, we're joyful, we are expectant as we go to your living truth. We ask right now that you anoint our eyes, that we might clearly see you, Lord Jesus, our Savior, shepherd, and king. Father, we want to see you so that we might serve you with our best. It's in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen. All right, do you have Psalm 22 open? Well, let's look at Psalm 22, and I'll remind you that the Psalms in general would be the biblical hymn book. These Psalms are, they're words of praise. They literally mean praise. There are 150. They were written over decades, even centuries, because Psalm 90 is attributed to Moses. The primary author is David. It's believed that 73 of the Psalms came from the heart and pen of David. They are Hebrew poetry. Now, Hebrew poetry is a little different than our rhyming poetry. For instance, Valentine's is coming up, and I generally write an epic poem for Mary Ruth. It goes something like this, "Roses are red, violets are black. Mary Ruth, you give me a heart attack." Doesn't that just touch you? Doesn't that deal with your emotions and grip them? Hebrew poetry did not rhyme. It was parallel thoughts. "God is my shield; God is my fortress." That would be Hebrew poetry. So that's what we have here in the book of Psalms. Charles Swindoll put it best. He said, "These are conversations with God that prompt our worship." Indeed, that is true. Well, let's listen in to David's conversation with God in Psalm 22, because God is giving David a picture of the Savior, Jesus. Let's begin with verse 1. "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" What was David saying here? What is the meaning here? Well, let me connect a dot. You've heard that from the cross in Matthew 27, verse 46. Jesus is on the cross. He spoke seven times from the cross. And he said, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" Is this a cry of abandonment? Or was Jesus simply quoting Psalm 22? I believe he was quoting Psalm 22. Jesus had a group of people, the Pharisees, the Sadducees, the scribes, and they had memorized much of the Psalms. So when Jesus said Psalm 22 in that first verse, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?", they could see the rest of it. Let me put a frame around it. David wrote Psalm 22 around 1,000 B.C. That would be 1,000 years before the birth of Jesus. And yet, it is a precise description of the elements of crucifixion. So Jesus is letting these people know that they have unwittingly played a role in fulfilling the Scripture. Jesus said in John 19, verse 28, that he came to accomplish the Scripture. And when all was fulfilled, that's when he died. He was fulfilling the Scripture. Even Psalm 22 is being fulfilled, because God gave David a picture of what would come. Look at verse 14, for instance. Scripture says, "I am poured out like water, and all my bones are out of joint." I want you to remember what was happening at the cross. You see, when a person was crucified, he was nailed to these boards. And then the cross was raised up and dropped in a four-foot hole. And when the bottom of that cross hit the bottom of the hole, can you imagine the jarring butt? It's historically recorded that sometimes people's shoulders were jerked out of joint. Can you imagine that Jesus had bones out of joint when he was crucified? Goes on to say in verse 15, "My strength is dried up like sun-baked clay, and my tongue cleaves to my jaws." Have you ever lost a lot of blood? Do you know what happens? You get thirsty. Before the crucifixion, Jesus was beaten viciously. It's estimated that he lost one-third to a half of his blood supply. And so he was thirsty. I had a terrible experience where I had a GI bleed several years ago. It was 2012. And it all came to a head at church one morning. I was preaching at the 8:30 service. My mouth, it grew as dry as cotton. I knew something was wrong, but I just wanted to press on and get through it. I was going to be fortified by the Lord's Spirit. I was going to get through it. So I came to my pastor's class at 9:45, and I was not feeling right. I was feeling nauseated, woozy. My mouth was so dry. As a matter of fact, I got really sick. I went to the men's room. I said, "Kenny, I'm not feeling right." And I went back, and I threw up. I had a microphone on, and I forgot to turn off the mic, actually. And when I came back, everybody was kind of grossed out. They said, "Jay, oh, we know you got really sick." And I did go home, and I found out later that I'd lost about 35% of my blood from a bleed. I was thirsty. My mouth was cotton. That's what was happening with Jesus. Verse 16, "The dogs have surrounded me." Do you know what that means? Jesus was crucified in the valley of Gehenna, and it was the trash dump of Jerusalem. When people's bodies were taken down by the Roman soldiers, they were oftentimes thrown into the trash dump, and their scavenging dogs would come and eat the flesh. He was surrounded by dogs. "A band of evil-doers have encompassed me." Look at this. "They pierced my hands and my feet." This is an amazing, precise prophecy. Crucifixion was not invented until the Persians came up with this cruel form of torturous execution in the third century B.C. The Romans refined it for insurrectionists. So David had never seen a crucifixion, yet he says, "My hands and my feet, they were pierced." That's what happened at the cross. But this is even more astonishing. Look at verse 18. "They divided my garments among them, and for my clothing they cast lots." Somehow, David saw this picture of Jesus on the cross and the Roman soldiers gambling for its only possession, his clothing. Our friend, this is a picture of Jesus. Do you see it? Do you see Jesus on the cross dying for you? Certainly, Isaiah saw it. It says in Isaiah 53, verse 5, "He was pierced for our transgressions." He writes 600 years before Jesus was born. "He was crushed for our iniquities. By his wounds, we are healed. All we, like sheep, have gone astray, each to his own way, and the Lord has laid upon him the iniquity, the sin of us all." Isaiah saw it. John the Baptist saw it. You know, when John the Baptist saw Jesus, it's recorded in John 1:29, that he said, "Behold, the Lamb of God, who comes to take away the sin of the world." That's a picture of Jesus being the Passover Lamb. When did he die on the cross? He died at Passover. He was the Lamb of God, taking away the sin of the world. Paul saw it. He said in Romans 5:8, "God has demonstrated his great love for us, even while we were yet sinners. Christ died for us." And then Jesus explained it. Jesus said in Mark 10:45, "I have not come to be served, but to serve, and to give my life as a ransom for many, as a ransom for you, friend." Here's the takeaway point. Because Jesus died for you, he calls you to live for him. Because Jesus, as your Savior, has saved you, he calls you to serve him with your best. Well, let's press on, because we've got to come now to Psalm 23. Jesus is the Savior. He's also the shepherd, the shepherd. All right, let's come to Psalm 23. And in my opinion, what is Psalm 23? Ah, it is, could it be the crown jewel of all of the Psalms? There are people who study literature who suggest that Psalm 23 is the most known piece of literature in the entire world. So let's approach it in the right fashion. It's dangerously familiar. Sometimes, we can become immune to its message. But Psalm 23 has a key, and it's in the first verse. As a matter of fact, the first four words. And what do they say? Oh, you can recite it. "The Lord is a shepherd." Let me pull that apart. I want you to think about it for a moment. The word "Lord," what does it mean? It's Yahweh, Yahweh. That's the covenant name for God, and it's used 6,800 times in the Scripture. Yahweh. And this is a picture of the "to be" verb in Hebrew. The basis of the word Yahweh is "to be." It's saying that everything that exists, everything that is, has been created by God. As the theologians say, "God is the ground of all beings. He is the originator of everything." So here is a picture of the Lord, your Creator, your Redeemer, your Sustainer, the one who created everything. The Lord is. That's present tense. He was, he will be, but he is. The Lord is. I want you to think about that just for a moment. The Lord is right now. God is present in everything. That's why it says in Psalm 46, "God is our refuge and strength. He is our present help in times of trouble." Think about what it means for God to be present in your pulse, in your people, in your pleasures, in your problems. God is there. The Lord is. He's the 24/7 Savior and Shepherd. Let me ask you a question. What does your present tense walk with God look like? I've asked that question to many people, and sometimes I've heard responses like the fellow who told me, "Well, I was saved when I was about 10, and I was strong in church until I went to college, and then I guess I just faded, and I've really never come back." A fellow told me that recently. Do you have a present tense walk with God? Let me put it in a familiar frame. Let me tell you about my relationship to Mary Ruth. I met her in 1975 at Baylor University after a Wednesday night prayer meeting. We were married at the First Baptist Church of Jackson, Mississippi, on June 11, 1977, 44 years ago. And Mary Ruth is the love of my life. She is my best friend. She is my partner in parenting and grandparenting and in ministry. We've traveled the world together. We've got much more to go. That's who Mary Ruth is to me. She is the love of my life. Can you say that about Jesus? Do you have a current, present tense relationship to Jesus, where he is, where he is your centerpiece and the foundation of your life? The Lord is. And then we move from present to personal. The Lord is my. My, that personal pronoun is everything. As a matter of fact, I would suggest the entire passage rotates around that two-letter word, "my." The Lord is my. You see, it personalizes it. He didn't say, "The Lord is a shepherd." The Lord is the shepherd. He says, "The Lord is my shepherd." On many occasions, I've gone to the hospital when people have had babies. And sometimes that proud new father will say, "Pastor Jay, let's go look at the baby." So we'll walk down to that preview window in the nursery. I can just hear that proud new father say, "Hey, Pastor Jay, look at a baby." He doesn't say that. He doesn't say, "Look at a baby." He said, "Look at my boy. Look at my girl." And there's this exhilaration, this thrill about that personal pronoun. That's my child, and I am their dad. You see, you've got to have a personal walk with God. And you should proudly say, "He is my Jesus." It always bothers me when I hear like an athlete after a victory say, "Well, I want to thank the man upstairs." I find that insulting. That's like when people say their wife is the old lady or the husband is the old man. That's pejorative. That's a put-down in my book. God is not simply the man upstairs. He is the God who created everything. He died on a cross for you. He wants to be your good shepherd who walks with you and sustains you. And that brings me to the concept of shepherd. Shepherd? Oh, let's think about it. "The Lord is my shepherd." What does a shepherd do? Well, a shepherd guides and provides. You might say, "A shepherd is designed to meet the needs of the sheep." Now, David is acknowledging here that at the bottom of it, he's a sheep. David had been a shepherd, so he understood the dynamic of a sheep. I grew up with cows and horses, and we had one time 1,000 sheep and goats. My dad even had a business where they would shear sheep, and that was wool, shear goats. That was mohair. But I discovered a good bit about sheep when I was a kid. I noticed that sheep are dumb, for one thing. So to say that we're sheep acknowledges that we have intellectual limitations, that we're not God. We don't know everything. So sheep are dumb. You've got to admit. Have you ever seen an act where they're trained sheep that come out and do tricks like dogs do or other animals do at the circus? No, I've never seen a trained sheep. They're kind of dumb. They're defenseless. They don't have big claws. They don't run fast. They don't have sharp teeth. They're directionless. They get lost easy. That's why we have the parable in Luke 15 about the lost sheep. The shepherd goes to seek the one. And they're also dependent. They're dependent upon the shepherd. That's why the sheep analogy is perfect. I was over in the Holy Lands, and I liked the idea that this is my Jesus, holding a little lamb, saying, "I'm going to take care of you. I will meet your greatest needs." And this is my favorite picture of Jesus, my good shepherd, taking care of the lamb. Now, let me break it down. Let's pick up here in verse 2. "He makes me to lie down in green pastures. I'm his little lamb. I'm a wolf in sheep's clothing, by the way. He leads me beside the still waters. He restores my soul. He guides me in paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Don't bring shame to his holy name." Verse 4, the heart of it. "And even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou dost prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Thou hast anointed my head with oil; my cup overflows. Surely goodness and loving kindness or mercy will follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Let me put it this way. The shepherd, Jesus, he will provide our needs. Physical needs, that's the green pastures. Sheep eat grass. They need food. He's going to take care of you. Jesus said in Matthew 6 that if God takes care of the birds of the air, won't he take care of your basic needs? Food, water, rest, protection? He will take care of us physically. It says in Philippians 4, verse 19, "My God will supply all of your needs according to his riches and glory in Christ Jesus." And remember, Jesus even identified himself as the good shepherd. In John 10, verse 11, he said, "I am the good shepherd, who will lay down his life for the sheep." So he's going to provide for you physically, emotionally, in the valley. He will give you security in the middle of difficulty. Think about this. "Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death..." Friends, I've done about 1,200 funerals. I've been to the graveyard more than most. And this means something very profound. The shadow of death. Oh, you've felt it cross your path when a loved one dies or you feel like your life is in jeopardy. But I want you to think about something. "Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, the shadow of a knife cannot cut you. The shadow of a dog cannot bite you. The shadow of a gun can't shoot you." And you can't have a shadow without a source of light. Inherently, we learn here, it's recorded in Psalm 27, "The Lord is my light and my salvation." Jesus said in John 8:12, "I am the light of the world. If you follow me, you don't walk in darkness." You see, Jesus gives us a new perspective as he shines a light on death. We'll all travel through that valley. But it's only a shadow. The ultimate reality is found in the love and light of our shepherd, Jesus. Goes on to say that the shepherd will provide our needs, not only physical and emotional, but spiritual. I love verse 5. "You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies, and anoint my head with oil." Do you know what? This is saying that when you follow the Lord Jesus, life is not a burden to bear. It's a party to share. He provides us a feast. What does a feast consist of? Well, he serves the life-giving water of the Word. He serves the bread and meat of his will and his work. He serves the fruit of his Spirit, love, joy, and peace. And then he anoints us with oil. Oil is generally a picture in the Scripture of the Spirit of God. And that's what he covers us with. He anoints us with his oil that heals and represents the fact that he is Emmanuel, God with us. And then, "His goodness and mercy follow me." In my mind, I think of sheepdogs. We used to have a couple of border collies to work with, sheep and goats. And maybe one was named goodness and the other mercy. And those sheepdogs are always beside us, tendiness, guidingness, providing for us. And the great denouement, the fabulous conclusion. Verse 6, he says, "I will dwell in the house of the Lord." How long? Forever. Of what a picture is created here. It's a picture of heaven. Jesus said in John 14, he said, "Let not your heart be troubled. You believe in God? Believe also in me. In my Father's house, there are many mansions." And he said, "I'm going to go and prepare a place for you, and I'll come back and receive you to myself." There's not a greater promise in all of the Scripture than John 14, but it links directly to Psalm 23:6. I've seen a lot of great houses on the planet. The Nusswindstein Castle over in Bavaria. How about some of the great castles like the Hearst Mansion on the West Coast? Out here in America, there's some pretty fancy places to live. The Biltmore Mansion is amazing in North Carolina. But there's nothing like what God has prepared for you. Remember, Jesus is the architect of that house. Jesus is the builder. Jesus is the decorator. He's the maintainer. If you go to Revelation 21, you get the full picture. Everything will be perennially brand-new. You don't want to miss dwelling in the Lord's house forever. That's his invitation. And that's why you make Jesus your shepherd. He will meet all of your needs. Well, we've got to finish up. That takes us to Psalm 24. Psalm 24. And this is a declaration that Jesus, the Savior and the shepherd, he's the king, the sovereign king of my everything. Now, we can't pull this all apart, but it's worth it. But I'm going to focus on just verse 7. Verse 7 is the heart of it. Listen to Psalm 24, verse 7. "Lift up your heads, O gates, be lifted up or opened, O ancient gates, that the King of glory may come in." Do you know who this King of glory is? It's Jesus. Jesus is the King of glory. He is the king of your everything. The Scripture describes Jesus as King of kings and Lord of lords. That's what Paul told Timothy. And he tells us in Philippians, chapter 2, that Jesus has the name that is above every name, that at the name of King Jesus, the King of kings, every knee will bow, every tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God. You see, Jesus deserves to be your king of everything. I want you to think about it like this. In Revelation 3:20, we learn that the king stands at your heart door and knocks. And you should do what it says here. Lift up or open the gate or the door. It's a picture of a castle having a barrier that's a gate, and it lifts up and it invites the victorious king to come in. You see, God is not a burglar. He will not break into your life. But he wants for you to grant him permission to come in. That's Revelation 3:20. Open the door, and he will come in and be with you forever. And then there's a picture here in Revelation 17 and Revelation 19 of Jesus being King of kings and Lord of lords, the victor, the ultimate triumphant king. And you know this. Jesus wins. And he wants to share his victory with you. He does not design for you to be a victim, but his victor, one who conquers in life. Oh, my friend. Let me put it like this. Here's what you ought to do. Here's something that I do every day. Because Jesus is the king of my everything, I surrender myself to him afresh and anew every day. I become that Romans 12:1, "living sacrifice." When I start the day, I put my keys in my pocket. You do too. And these keys represent what I own, what belongs to me. But I basically say, "Lord Jesus, I give it all to you. I surrender all. All to thee, my precious Savior. I surrender all." Now, friend, that's what Jesus invites you to do right now. Be sure that Jesus is your Savior, your shepherd, and your king of your everything. Live a surrendered life, because he's the king of kings. Let's wrap this all together in prayer. Would you pray with me? Lord Jesus, oh, we praise you. We praise you for all that you do, all that you are. And right now, we acknowledge that you are Savior, shepherd, and sovereign king of our everything. We want to make to you a sacred promise, to walk with you and surrender our all to your leadership and... to your leadership and eternal lordship. It's in the powerful name of Jesus we pray. Amen. I treasure, friend. I urge you to be wise and to live surrendered to Jesus, your Savior, shepherd, and King of everything.